You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Westminster School Board meeting.
So we have called the meeting to order, but just getting ready to start. And I would just simply call for introduction as a courtesy to the public who may not always know who everyone is in the room. And I'll start with you, Karen.
Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Thank you, all right. And around this table, starting with Jim.
Jim Vazina, Finance.
Andy Haas, Superintendent.
Team BLC, Westminster School Board, sorry. Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Board.
Charlie Hudson, Vice Chair of the Board.
And Liz Hardy, Principal Westminster Center School.
Very good. Well, welcome, everybody, and thanks to those of you who may watch this later if you're not with us now. With the next topic is adjustments to the agenda, and I would actually like to propose one, and that is to move action on 8D up to, right after the review and approval of the Board Minutes. So we would take action on ratifying the teacher roster, knowing that Karen Blanchard, Board Member, cannot be here for the whole meeting. I'd like to move that forward at a time when she can be here. And I understand that there are other topics coming later that might affect that, but I think it's still appropriate to take action on that while we, on the full roster at this time. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay.
I was only asking also about whether I need to be there for the teacher request for leave or not. And I know that needs an executive session, so I, if you have enough, I'm just wanting to make sure that... Anyway, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you for that thoughtfulness. I, you know, I think that will be fine. And I personally think as practice, it's not a good idea to go immediately into executive session with members of the, of the public joining. I see that Margie Ferry has just joined us, so you could let her in. So anyway, Karen, thank you. We'll go ahead and, and take that in the order that it is on the, on the agenda. Margie, welcome.
I can't hear you again, actually, Cheryl. I don't know what's going on with the mic.
Okay, I was just asking Margie Ferry to introduce herself, if she could.
Oh, I'm Margie Ferry, Westminster Board.
Thank you, and thanks for joining, you know, not in the most optimal circumstances. So we appreciate your effort to, to join the meeting tonight. The next item for action is Communications and Public Commentary. It does not appear that we have any, Andy.
I don't see any.
All right, with that, we'll move ahead. And the next item for action is to review and approve Board Minutes for two meetings, February 16th and March 20th. Does anybody have any corrections to either set of minutes?
I don't have a correction, but I would like to correct what I said.
That's a correction.
Okay, but it's not that they call, misquote, to be honest.
Which, which meeting?
Well, let me think, which one is it? It is, um, hmm? It is, must be the second one.
I believe it was the March 20th, Lee.
It must be the first one.
The first one has more directors coming.
Yeah, wherever they are. Here we go, director, yes, the first one. Anyway, so I'm quoting a saying to Andy. Thank you, Andy, for being the voice of, for being the, for being there and being the voice of reason. Now, I don't mean any disrespect to Andy whatsoever, but I can't imagine myself saying you were the voice of reason. You were a voice of reason, I'm sure, amongst many others. I just wanted to be sure that I wasn't sort of being...
And it was in the context of the discussion of the proposed policy.
Yes, and we had this agreement, and we had a very reasonable disagreement. And I guess I was just trying to say in that way, thank you for engaging in a reasonable discussion.
So you would propose that being a voice of reason?
A voice of reason, yes.
That's a proposal. I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve both sets of minutes, and then we'll have discussion, and we'll have the specifics. So I mean, so move. So Team BLC has moved approval of the minutes from February 16th and March 20th. In discussion, we have one proposed correction to the minutes of February 16th, being to change under Director's Comments, Charlie's comment referring to thanking Andy for being a voice of reason rather than the.
And you don't get to be the ultimate voice of reason.
Yeah.
If this is the, implies the only one.
Oh, yeah, yes.
But it isn't me.
Grammatically, I'll make a, a change also under the same set of minutes, February 16th, under six reports. Cheryl said we have half a million in surplus. We actually had closer to 1.6 million in, in surplus.
The volume is going down again. That's all I want to say.
It's right in front of me, so I'm not sure what's going on. I'll try to enunciate. Is that any better, Karen?
I honestly don't think it's you. I think it's the, somehow that, whatever you're calling that thing. It's going in and out a little bit. I just hope that Fact TV people can also hear, that's all.
Thank you. So with that, that correction, are there any other corrections to the minutes? Looking at Monday, March 20th, just one small one. The date of the next meeting was listed is April 3rd. It's April 6th, which is today. So that's a small, a small correction. In fact, there are no more corrections or changes. I'll ask that we vote on approval of the minutes as corrected. Karen, do you want to vote? Can you hear me?
Yes, I, I, yes, I. I think as amended, the minutes are great.
Okay, thank you very much. Team?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Okay, and I do as well. So the minutes are approved as, as corrected. So then next, we will move the ratification of the teacher roster. And I wonder, Liz, if you would introduce that for us?
Sure.
So the proposed teacher roster, do we should read them?
Let's see whether they can hear you. Oh, okay, can you hear me? Karen? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Great. Okay, would you like me to read the names? Is that how we do this? No? Okay, so I am, um, asking for approval of 26 positions, licensed educator position. That would include classroom teachers, essentialists, and special educators are not included in this group.
Correct, these are just local funded.
Local funded, yep. So it would be classroom teachers and special educators, nurse, school counselor.
Librarian.
Yeah, essentialist, yeah, librarian, studio Y, art, PE, music.
Liz, would you see asterisk by Kate and Colton maybe?
That will be discussed in the executive session.
Perfect.
That's correct. So, so with that, I think we would say for the public that this is a very stable list of, of, of people thankfully choosing to work here at this wonderful school. We've got, in the information provided to the Board, you can see we have a range of expertise from some new and younger teachers to some who've been, or literally at the top of the pay scale in, in our supervisory union. And it's a great mix of people. I, I think we want to give credit, Liz, to you and the whole team for creating such a strong community and positive community here.
Yeah, we have some great new hires this year. We had a lot of hiring last year, as you know. And we have been able to welcome some really wonderful new hires that have really connected with our veteran staff who have been here for 20-plus years. So it's, it's been a great, a great year staff-wise, definitely. So I'm very proud of this list that I'm proposing to the Board, and I'm excited for the growth of the school with this group of educators.
That's good.
It is a great group of educators.
All right. Me, I have a motion to approve the roster.
Margie has her hand up.
I'm sure. Yes, of course. Can you explain to us a little bit what the steps in the 13BA? I mean, clearly, BABS is the Bachelor of Arch, Bachelor of Science, Masters, but can you explain to us what those numbers mean behind their names?
Yeah, so, so first of all, an FTE, just because sometimes, and I don't, I don't know if everyone... So an FTE is a full-time equivalent. So a one is, is a teacher who's a full-time teacher, and if it's less, then that means they're less. So like a point eight is four days a week typically type of thing. The step, the step has to do with the CBA.
CBA being collective bargaining.
Collective bargaining agreement, thank you. I have to channel my inner David Clark, remember, thank you. So the step refers to basically, it's not years of service, but it has to do with just moving up in the pay scale on a yearly basis. So when a teacher enters into our system, all teachers, if they're a brand-new teacher or within four years, they all come in at step four. So, and then every year you move a step is the best way to explain it at that point.
Unless steps are frozen.
Unless steps are frozen, yes, thank you, Team. And that, that could happen if there's a, if we're in the middle of negotiations and we can't come to a, you know, conclusion on a contract.
Or unless someone obtains additional academic credit or degrees that allow them.
You can't move a step.
You move a column.
You move a column at that point.
Oh, that helps. There's steps, it's like a coordinate grid.
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
You move steps and columns, okay.
Margie, if, if one day you are happy to be by the SU, we can pull out the CBA and kind of walk you through it, because it's, it's outlined in the CBA. But steps do not equate to years of service. They, they just equate to a, a movement on, a movement laterally, no, horizontally on the scale. And then you can move horizontally into a column, so if you earn more credits.
That's right, that's helpful to, to me to restate that. Because if a person wants to earn more money, for example, the only way they can move is to move horizontally, is to acquire additional academic credit or degrees to do that. Otherwise, the way they get increases is to move up the scale in the steps, as Andy has described.
What are the plus, after their degree, is that additional credits?
Yeah, so, so a master's plus 15 means that teacher earned a master's degree and has shown us through transcripts that they've earned 15 additional credits after the masters, but they maybe haven't, you know, certain degrees are awarded at certain credits. So, so that's where you get to that. So we do even have a bachelor's plus type of thing also, so.
If you look, Margie, if you look at the sheet that, that you were sent, and this is to a point that Liz made a few minutes ago, we have three educators, three teachers at step five. They would have come in last year, as Andy said, at step four. So they're in their second year with us in service. And the highest level possible within our structure is the step 18 and master's plus 30. And master's plus 30, thank you for...
Yeah, yeah, that's longevity.
Okay, any, any other questions? Karen says no.
You, but one more thing, Margie, that if you, even if you've not taught in this district, but you've taught in other districts, you still move, you don't start at the first step, you start at an appropriate step.
Yeah, okay.
Did we have a motion?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I think I did, so move. I just like to say that.
All right, so there's a, a motion on the floor to approve the teacher roster for fiscal year, school year, I should say, 2023-24, which starts next fall. So I'll do a poll since Karen and Margie are virtual tonight. Karen, beginning with you, how do you vote, please?
Yay.
Thank you. Margie?
Yes.
Thank you. Team, yes. Charlie?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes as well. Unanimously approve your teacher roster.
Can I ask one question about the teacher roster? Is it, is it just, is there only one teacher who's going to definitely be in a grade level next year, or is it just, it just came out that way in the RITA?
So, so...
It says first grade elementary teacher.
Yeah, so we are, we are consistent. There's some past practice of, they don't put them all down as elementary teachers. Sometimes they used to put first grade teacher, second grade teacher. So we're, we're slowly migrating out as we go through contracts. And so, like newer teachers that have come in, we purposely say elementary teacher so that we're not saying first grade teacher.
Okay.
But this, this one teacher still has it as first grade.
Came to us from Grafton, it might have been.
Yeah, but at the same time, you don't like, sometime we, we fall into some, some teachers have been like, wait a minute, my last contract said I was a first grade teacher. Now you're saying I'm an elementary teacher, and they just, that's the reason.
Especially in this school, when we have to change. You know, there's bubbles that go up, and sometimes there's a cohort of one, and we are kind of always shuffling. Yeah. So it wouldn't be in our best interest to attach grade levels to teacher contracts.
Correct. And I would say in practice, as long as I've been on this floor, we've talked about elementary teachers, to provide everybody the flexibility that's needed.
And so that's just a, that'll get changed now at the...
There is one other exception, when it's a sixth grade teacher.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Does that mean she's locked in as a sixth grade?
Um, I would like to. No, I, no, it's, I don't know necessarily. She's a new teacher. Yeah, she's a new teacher.
I don't know how that happens.
I have one of the great, I don't know if this is the right time, but I remember at the beginning of this year or end of last year, we talked about mentoring of new teachers by, by more mature teachers. Have you ever come, remember if you reported back on how that went or how it's going, or is this a time to do so?
Well, the feedback has been really great. Every new staff member has a mentor. We're able to do that within the school, so they have both a teammate and a mentor. So their mentor not, is not necessarily their teammate, and they meet on a regular basis. And then I believe they meet at the SU level as well to check in and to talk about lesson planning and all things that a new teacher would need to check in on. So the feedback has, when I've met with new teachers throughout the year, they feel super supported and...
So a new fourth grade teacher meets, not only with the other fourth grade teacher that were one, but in other schools as well?
Well, they'll meet with, so our structure of our week, grade levels and grade stands are meeting together on a regular basis. And then that fourth grade teacher who's new might also, will also meet with their mentor on a regular basis that's in the building. So they're getting supported by not only a colleague on their same grade level or if they're a teacher who won the grade, the grade above or below, but they're also getting supported by mentors in the building.
If I can unpack that just a little bit more. So the mentor program is an SU-level program. And every new teacher who comes into the SU is assigned a mentor. We do everything we can to try and use someone within the building, but there are times that we've had to use someone in another building. It's not ideal. So Deb Cardane oversees that program. Mentees, so the, the veteran teacher is given a stipend that's paid through one of our title grants, Title II. And so, and then they meet on a regular basis with Deb as a whole cohort to talk about like their needs and stuff of that nature and just what they're seeing. But then there's a specified number of meetings that the mentor and the mentee need to meet together, and that's not valid, you know, an evaluation or anything like that. It's just something to support that teacher and to do that. So, so that happens throughout. And then in the second year, a teacher can ask for a mentor if they want. And if we have funds available, we can usually provide that. Or a principal may strongly recommend that a, a person have a mentor for a second year. And so we try and accommodate at that point, so. But, but that's just, it's not just new teachers also. So like, let's say Team decided to come back and teach in our district. She'd be coming back as a new teacher to our SU. We'd assign her a mentor, so.
Is there, actually, this is something I don't know. Is there additional compensation, it sounds like, from the SU?
Yeah.
For the mentors?
Yes, the, yes, mentors. I did say mentees, and I, yes, mentor. The mentors get a stipend for their work, yes.
Okay. And to Charlie's question, there is not necessarily a time when, let's say, all the fourth grade teachers throughout the supervisory union meet. To what extent does that happen?
That is in our professional development plans for next year. It has not been something that's been a regular practice in the last five years.
We were able to do it actually during COVID, we didn't have...
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we did. But this year it hasn't been super regular. And I think it's in the plans for the PD. Because when you're in a school where you're the only grade level.
Exactly.
It is, yeah, it's isolating. It's absolutely, yeah. I mean, it's just good practice anyway, that we're always talking about. Particularly when there's equity across the SUs, to make sure we're on the same page on things, but...
Similarly, we'd like to have all the Board members at one time together too, just for a little cross-fertilization that's healthy as well.
Is there any plan at any point that in classroom visits or observations by mentors? Or do they do that currently?
Mentors can, they absolutely can, non-avalutary, but they would go and watch their teaching and especially...
Yeah, they, they...
Oh, do they have to? I think it's part of it. Yeah.
They sit in, they go in, they sit in, and then they give feedback, you know? A, a new, you know, a mentee could say, hey, can you come in and just give me feedback on this also? And, you know, but, but there are, there, I don't have the packet in front of me, so I, I mean, but there is a, there is a whole procedure for what they're supposed to do.
Yes. Okay. Any, any other comments or questions about the teacher roster or the community at large within the school? You, your principal's report comes in a while.
Yeah, I will have some in a while.
I'm going to ask Karen though, knowing that you're time constrained tonight. I wondered if you wanted Karen to make your director's comments and then leave yourself able to leave whenever you need to? That's simply a question for you now. The next item on the, on the agenda would be the finance report from, from Jim Vazina.
Okay. Well, I'd love to hear his report, so I'll, I'll be here anyway. My comments are, I'm so glad that I can be here even remotely, so. And I'm so glad that we work with the roster. That's what I'm wanting to say. Congratulations, Liz.
Thank you. Great, all right, thank you, Karen. And just slip away when you need to. But we'll also, you'll have a chance to hear some of Jim's comments, and if you have questions, of course, raise them. So with that, Jim, if you want to take us through the finance report, that would be great.
I'm on page one. They sure.
I have the right one.
You have it?
Thank you.
Pleasantly.
I don't know, thank you.
So I'm page one. This is your expenditures by function. And, and again, I think the last time we talked, you had about a half million dollars. And I, I still think you're in that, that range, because you've got a million dollars left. Today's the 6th, May and June, not, not a full month in June. So, you know, you, you could end up with another $100,000 on top of that if, if the encumrement isn't all expended. So it's, it's a good position to be in. If you turn to page two, on line eight, you'll see that you picked up $36,000 of tuition, which again adds to your bottom line. You know, when you combine both the expenditures and the, and the revenue side, it puts you in a, in a good driver's seat position.
This was the two students, who?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I, I, different strokes for different folks. And most of the time when we get to this time and say, you're going to end up with a surplus. You know, and again, there are some boards that will say, oh, we can't touch that. We, we're going to have, go back to the townspeople and see what they want to do. There are other boards that will say, well, you know, we've been wanting to get this fixed over here. The boiler is going to go down one of these, one of these years, so we better put some money towards it. So it gives you an opportunity now to look at are there things, items that absolutely have to be done now?
We have a lot of projects going on.
And then, you know, and I'm not talking the frivolous project, but stuff that is broken. You know, and I just will say this, last summer, you had pumps that were down. And, I mean, that was a $38,000 expenditure. So if there are items like that, boy, I would, would grab right onto it now and put a purchase order out and encumber those funds. So that may be some other meeting that you'll want to think about and discuss and see what, if there's anything that might come up to that. And again, if you're, if you're looking for a little bit more detail, you know, pages three through seven, kind of go down a little bit more refined with, with the accounts and where you're expending. And again, I think we're okay for, you know, all of the salary and benefits piece. I think those are encumbered, and I think it's working okay. Where we may end up expending some is on the oil, depending on where we are with the oil. Because we'll have to, I, I would love to be able to start with a full tank, but we'll see. So you're in a good position, and a rare one these days.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jim? Would the overage have to be spent on facility-like updates? Or if the, if, let's say, there was a desire to pilot some type of a program, like could they spend it on that type of curfew materials? Or could they spend it on other materials? Or is it, should it just be facility-based?
No, it doesn't have to be facility-based. I think we just, I think our heads have been so much in facilities these days that, you know, that, that's where we've been thinking about it. I mean, if there was, you know, I know Deb has been working with the principals and, and, you know, looking at using, using some title funds and doing some piloting and some different, you know, things, so. But no, it, it is not mandated to go over facilities.
No, but it is. So we, putting all of this in context though, we know that the voters of Westminster voted to approve the use of prior surplus monies for several reserve funds. We, we all know that, we'll be talking about that more. We're looking at two potential additional sources of surplus. One is this budget, and the other is the supervisory union audited results that may be in a position to distribute monies back to each of the districts, as I understand it. So we may have, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So we may have, we may actually have additional things, I would think, to take to the voters as a result of this. I think we're pretty proactive, Jim, looking right now, and what are the capital needs here? What are the possible things? And we do have this wonderful set of reserve monies that the voters have approved. So we're, we're in a better position than, than many places.
Yeah, but I think if like, if, if Liz and the school identified like a need for DES upgrades or something like that, that surplus could, your current funds could be allocated towards something like that, so.
Right. You're saying in the current year without any, because we could expend some things current.
It's the bottom-line budget, so you have the money.
During the year, that's your point, okay? So be actively thinking about that.
I guess what we're saying is it's, it's monies you want to spend now.
So it could be enhancing classroom libraries, upgrading DES programs.
Yes.
There's an interesting aspect of this too, that we have reserve monies for the seventh and eighth grade tuitions. We show in your budget to actual an overspending in that area now by more than $100,000. And we've got that money from years past that's set aside for that. So we could increase what's available to Liz and the team here by using that reserve fund in this current budget year.
Yeah.
So all of these things to be thought through.
Yeah, making a little short list.
Yeah, right, exactly. I do have a question on... Yeah, right. On page two, just because I don't understand it, and it's the shortfall for the general fund revenue. If you could just explain that.
What line is that?
It's the bottom line. It's the bottom line.
Line?
So, there's, there's two big items that are left to come in. And that is your state educational grant money. Now, that's paid three times a year. Last payment comes in, I think it's in May, the beginning of May.
Okay.
So when that comes in, that should balance you out, you know, to a positive.
Great. That's what I needed to know. Yeah, needed to know that. I, that's just not, that wasn't clear to me, so thank you.
Cheryl, would you mention that, what the line item is you were just talking about? Sorry.
On page two of the financial report that Jim sent us, it is line nineteen. And it showed that we were, had a shortfall of eight-hundred-fifty-two thousand, seven-hundred-sixty.
Okay.
And he was just saying it's money due to us from the state that is probably coming in in May.
Yes, beginning of May.
Thank you very much. I did hear that part. I just wanted to know the line. Thanks.
Okay. Good. Are there any other, yes?
I just want to say, because we're wrangling in the finance office with this. And that is, I, I want to present an accurate picture of your taxation piece. Now, when I say that, I'm talking total taxation. That includes what you pay for the high school, which you raise and appropriate for the high school as well.
Right.
And it, it's, it's not easy to do because it's just, we're actually putting the money into two buckets because we're actually showing that in the high school bucket as well. So, we're figuring out an easy fix of showing it in both places to make sure that it's, it's recorded correctly. So I, I just wanted to mention that here.
Thank you very much. I am going to have to go. And Jim, as always, your clarity around the budget is always much appreciated. Thank you all very much, and I'll see you next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, if there are no more questions for Jim, we'll move on to the principal's report. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. The past thirty days Westminster has had an average daily attendance of ninety-four percent of our students.
Which is the same as.
Let's just say, pretty similar to last time. Yep. And some upgrades or some things happening with facilities. Our roof repair, as you know, Esser funded our roof repair both at the center school and Studio Y. So that work will begin late June. We met with Steve Horton and Hunter from, we talked about the planning process and getting things ready. He's ordered materials, so basically as soon as school is out, they're going to start. So it is really great news that this is actually happening. Our HVAC upgrade, that's another project that will happen as soon as the supplies come in. This is funded through Efficiency Vermont, and we're working with Alliance Mechanical. And they're in the process of ordering materials. Once those materials are in, they'll begin the work, and we're expecting that later in this school year. The project will repair existing exhausts within this building. Like currently, there's no exhaust in these bathrooms in this hallway. And then different classrooms have different functioning exhausts. It's just inconsistent around the building. So it'll just upgrade all of that. And then currently, Studio Y has no HVAC system at all. So it'll be putting in an HVAC system at Studio Y. To go along with this, Westminster is also participating in the Efficiency Vermont Indoor Air Quality Monitoring Program. So that means that we will have ten monitors that will be placed around this building and the building at the west. The Efficiency Vermont will produce a monthly report about the indoor air quality, and that will happen through December. So we'll kind of see what we are now, and then we'll be able to see any improvement after the HVAC system project is complete. I know PCB testing is on our agenda, but just to say that, that was done in our building on March twenty-ninth. We received results from the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. No detected amounts and no further action was required by our, like, thank goodness.
There's your report.
How efficient it is.
Yeah, right, exactly. Summer programming, so all of the WNESU summer program will be housed at Westminster this year. So we'll be welcoming a hundred and fifty students within the SU. Fifty-three of those spots will be for Westminster students. And sign-ups have gone out to families, a meeting with Sarah Doran next week to talk about solidifying which students will have those spots. And Sarah Doran is the Director of Summer and After School Programming. Kim Budzik is our site coordinator. She will also be coordinating the summer program as well. This is free to families to attend, and the summer program will run from July fifth to August fourth. And we are excited. So we'll be using some classrooms in the building. We're also setting up space outside. So we can accommodate the number of students that'll be here in the building. Some events that have happened at Westminster, our glow party was March twenty-fourth.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the PTG. This was an event that happened once before, pre-COVID. So we kind of revisited that again. It was lots of fun. Families came, danced. There was variety of different glow sticks and glow products. It was a lot of fun, really high attendance, and kids were enjoying themselves kindergarten through sixth grade. So it was really great. The Parent Teacher Group also funded an author visit by Anne Braden. Anne is an author from Rattleboro who writes young adult fiction such as The Benefits of Being an Octopus, The Flight of the Puffin, and Opinions and Opossums. All of Anne's books focus on standing up for yourself even when life is hard. And Anne is a former middle school teacher, which I didn't realize. And her presentation was both engaging and inspiring for our students in grades four through six. And that was just that month. What's going on here? Are there any questions?
Can I piggyback just on, so everyone understands, the summer programming we've been able to offer, the reason it's free is we've been able to use Esser funds to support and provide that throughout the SU. And as long as we're using Esser funds, then programming has to be free. Once our Esser funds are gone, that will be a discussion of, do we want to, you know, as an SU, do we want to continue a program? And how would we fund that programming? Or is it go back to individual districts? I'd like to do that, whether it's through additional grant funding and finding that grant or local support, so.
Yes, thank you. Margie?
It seems like the school, the summer, I'm calling it summer school, but it's not, I know. But doesn't it, I think it would be good to keep doing it given the, the loss of learning that we've seen during the COVID years? And, and so, like, it seems like it makes good sense to use the Esser funds. And I guess it sort of segues into what I was, I've been thinking about. And, and a few different board members have asked about this. Is there, is there any way to assess the loss of learning? And then kind of like talk about how we're, or, or a way to not just talk about it, but to assess how we, how we're doing in that loss of learning?
So, it's a little tricky to assess loss of learning fully. But Deb Cardane is putting together some data that she will be bringing to each board on their different buildings, you know, where students are, where the students were. So we can kind of track that. But we really beefed up a lot of our data collection this year for our students. We're utilizing a program called Panorama that allows us to import all of that data and sort it and look at it differently, in different lenses, if you will. As far as summer programming, we are continuing to offer summer programming this summer and, and we'll be able to offer it next summer using Esser funds. So it'll be a discussion though, as we enter the FY twenty-five budget discussion, if we, how we will fund summer programming in the summer of twenty-five.
I heard you say that.
Okay, so I, I just want to be clear, like, like, that's how far, that's what I'm talking about. We're talking about the summer of twenty-five, where we're going to need, but we'll be needing to make those decisions in November of twenty-three.
Right, I guess I, I ask because when we need to justify, you know, budgets to the townspeople, it's really a lot easier to justify when you have, I mean, not subjective, objective numbers of how, how things affect the students. Like, we can't just walk into town meeting and say, like, we need to fund this because the kids love it. We have to say, the kids love it and it, it, it helped with their loss of learning, you know? Eighty percent of blah, blah, blah. We need numbers, you know? We need like data. And then we can justify it.
I would, I would respectfully depart from that. I would say, we can justify by saying the kids love it. And we may not find that it improves their, their loss of learning, but we would still be worth doing summer programming. So the argument may get a bit more nuanced than just it's all about loss of learning. It's okay to justify that kids need something fun to do in the summer. And, you know, keep up the streets.
Well, leaving into the mental health needs, that was so obvious during the remote learning that, and then one of the pillars of the Esser funding, right, is to support mental health in students. So, yes, I do think it helps students maintain a certain academic level. But I also think, equally as important, it helps students maintain a level of social skills and keeps our eyes on kids throughout the summer.
So I'm, I'm looking ahead at the agenda. We've got a couple of topics that will not take us as much time tonight. So I'm comfortable with our expanding this discussion just a little bit, a little bit more. And let me ask, if I understood correctly, are you saying that the whole, I hadn't heard this yet, the whole WNESU summer program is housed here, not at, not at Central?
So, we have been talking for a few years about trying to consolidate programming into one program for the whole SU as opposed to individual sites.
Right.
Some of that has to do just with resources. If we have to have a site coordinator at four or five different sites, there's a cost there. Having, you know, numbers of leaders for groups of students and whatnot. And so trying to figure out how to best do that. Not every teacher wants to work in the summertime. And so, so our resources are scarce. And so, we, two years ago, we were stretched very thin. We consolidated down last year. We were, we brought Graff in here, Saxon's River and Central consolidated.
Correct.
And that, that helped, but we were still stretched very thin. And so, you know, we're, we're thinner. And so, looking at how could we bring everyone, we can maximize our, our, our transportation because not every transportation driver wants to work in the summer. And so how can we maximize our resources and provide students with the best experience? And so, the idea is that Westminster would not host every year because we also can now do deep cleans in the building. So if we can, you know, next year, maybe host at Saxon's River, it'll allow folks to do some real cleaning or what they need to do to get the building ready. And so rotating it throughout the SU. Or even moving it up to the high school where we have much more grounds available to us and stuff like that. So other SUs have a similar model.
So, so when was the decision made that it would only be at Westminster this year? That's just not something, I was aware of it last year being at Westminster and at Central. I knew about.
Yeah, I apologize. We were, we were just, I, I think it was in a planning meeting a couple of months ago. And I guess, and I do apologize, it slipped for us to come back and, you know, ask, ask the board if it was okay.
Well, from, just from Westminster point of view, is there any downside? We've got new roofs coming on during the same time.
Yeah, we talked to Janamitz too about our programming and the timeline. And our students will be using the dining room, the gym, and then there's four classrooms off the gym lobby that they will be focused on using. And then the tent situation in the fields. And they won't need to go to that side of the building at all where the roofing will be happening. So they can exit these doors and go around.
No, obviously you've had discussion with Liz, so she's comfortable with it.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense. And then what we just heard you say is that going forward, it would not necessarily be hosted every year at Westminster. There'd be a rotation.
Yeah, I mean, we've really talked about, you know, what, what property within our, within our SU, knowing that they're different districts, but what property provides the best maximum, you know, opportunity for our students? And so, you know, that's where like, could the high school grounds really provide us that opportunity? You know, there's the, the large field, just as you're pulling in, it's right to the right before the high school. You know, if we set up some tents and whatnot so kids are out of the, out of the sun, have that access. We have access to the building.
To trails.
Trails are there. There's discussion of possibly reinstalling a ropes course there. And having, you know, so you have access to different things. And then our buses are housed there, so we have access, you know, quicker access to our buses and stuff like that. So, it's just been a discussion, you know, it's, I think it was, as I said, it just kind of, I think we kind of talked about it. We all had a conversation about it, but forgot to look at the boards, and so apologize.
It's, it's a wonderful program. The dates again are July five to August four.
Yeah.
So other kinds of enhancements that we're talking about here to enhance the outdoor learning, the, you know, all children access ideas. Some of the other projects that we have in mind will need to fit it around this as, as well.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
And to be honest with you, that was some of the rationale of saying, can we consolidate at Westminster? Because Westminster already has a lot of outdoor things in play.
Right.
And, and so therefore, it's naturally right here, so our students can access, you know, students can access that. And, and then we could look to try and replicate possibly some of those at other sites, so.
You know, and I, I don't know that it needs to be rotated. Well, let's just talk about it, but, you know, and kind of see how it goes.
Yep.
All of that kind of.
Well, I mean, I will acknowledge Liz's concern was, when's my building going to get a break?
Exactly.
And, and get an opportunity to get, you know, deep clean.
Yeah.
And so I want to be respectful of that because I really think that, that is a.
Let's see how it goes.
Let's see how it goes, okay. But a hundred fifty students in total, and that limitation is based on Esser funding? Based on the facility? Based on what you guess will be enough personnel?
I think it's based on past trends of what we've had available.
Okay.
It is based on what has been allocated out of Esser funds. But it's also based on what we're able to get for staffing.
Yeah.
And, and maintaining safety. I mean, safety is so important, you know? So we, we have a ratio of, of adult to students. And we don't want to, you know, go above and beyond that ratio, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
And next week, no school?
And vacation.
Yeah.
And the best weather for vacation. I know. And we'll have jump rope for heart tomorrow afternoon, which is a, you know, Westminster tradition right before April break. So we'll be out front with some music and jump ropes and watermelon.
Excellent. Very good. Anything else, Liz?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. That's great. So, next, we, really, any, anything you want to add on the PCB testing?
Yeah, the only thing, it was great to get a finding back of no PCBs. We, as required, we have to post a letter on our website, which it has been posted. We posted it both on Westminster's website, but also on the SU website. And so, the SU website will kind of house, as we get the other schools in, we'll just put them there also. So they'll be there forever, type of thing, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, oh, no. Next item of business is the plans for capital improvements. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the meeting that you had with Steve Horton?
Yeah.
Oh, so, do we need Jim anymore?
I didn't know if Jim wanted to listen to any of this.
And that's what I was, I didn't.
Or not.
So, okay, good. Thank you.
So the, the meeting with Steve's really revolved around getting our roof project moving forward. But we did talk about a structural analysis that could be both for the roof and for the solar.
Okay.
So that was really. So that was really, we didn't talk much of other projects with that. When we're talking about the surplus, some other projects that are coming to my mind could potentially be the bathrooms on the K1 hallway. Those are definitely in need of some improvement. We had talked last year about a second oil tank because last year when our wood, our wood chip boiler went down, we were filling one tank basically every day, not every day, but every other day, it was very frequent. So if we had two tanks, that would be beneficial because we were having people to live around the weekends. It was just a lot of extra cost. We have a very, a very great something out there.
Oil tank.
Yeah, so maybe removing that would be something that would be helpful for the building. And then mini split project was started before I came. And we, mini splits, these mini splits are around the building. And kind of assessing how many more we need to complete the project. So that is something else I'm just thinking about.
Is, is the question, is the operating security of the front doors, is that part of this or something else?
So that is through the SU, so that's the SU project, the entrance and the camera and the door system.
So, so there's two separate Esser projects that are happening across the SU. One is the camera and security enhancements. And so, that project is underway. We have a bidder, so we're in the process of now. We've awarded the bid, so that first, that, that company is collecting. And I think they're coming in over break to start running, start running wires and stuff like that. I don't know what the plant, what building they're coming into, but they'll be coming in. The other one is the enhancing the main entrance at this building. The architect will be coming next week to take some final measurements. They will be presenting, you know, some ideas that we'll bring back here to the board, to the school, you know, like what their ideas are, and then we can get moving on that project.
So. Because we asked the voters of Westminster to fund those projects, but you're saying it's funded through Esser as well?
Well, so we allotted a specific amount of money. If it comes back more, you now will have some, some local funds to help complete that project. And if, the way you worded your warrant is if the Esser funds cover that whole thing, then you have those funds to use in another.
I agree with you, but I was wondering, I had no idea there were other funds that were covering it. I thought we were voting 250,000 for that.
We, we knew there was, I knew there was a possibility that Esser would fund it, but was not confident.
Well, the, the other concern that we've had, we didn't have, at the beginning of those conversations, we didn't have Steve Horton with us.
That's correct.
And there were some real concerns about the expediting of projects and completion of projects. Steve's already got, Liz talked to you about, these projects, he's moving the needle quite a bit. And so, if the Esser funds run out in September of 2024, so if the project can't be completed by September of 2024, you, you can't keep expending Esser funds, so if you have funds available, or if for some reason it couldn't happen until later, you now have the funds available and you can do them later, so.
But in terms of the workload at the school, we now could take off our plate, having to think about the operating security of these buildings, because that's been, you've got that in hand.
For the most part.
To a degree, I mean, you don't have to be so alert to that in every way.
But we don't need to plan, we just need to listen to what your plans are and say, yes, okay, go ahead.
I, I think, I think, you know, again, just talking about security after Nashville, my mind quickly pivoted to glass doors and windows. And, and so we've been researching that. And I mean, the costs there are just astronomical. And, and how do we, you know, add a layer of safety? And, and, you know, other than putting up fences around our properties and, you know, which, you know, that, that's just prohibitive to keep the community out. I don't know, and to put up bulletproof glass, you're talking 45 to 85 dollars a square foot. So it's, it's, it's very, you know, expensive. And, but, I don't know if there's any expense that is too high. So, it's something we are looking at, at how we can add that. And so I think, one of the things is as we get this conversation about enhancing the entrance, the main entrance, we'll bring Mark Moody back from Visbit, who was, he's a security, safety expert that we've already had out, to help with like, what should we be putting on those doors? Now we're putting in new doors, now's the time to spend that money. So that's what we'll be looking to do, so.
By the way, I want to pass on a small anecdote from the front lines. I was taking his girl home the other day, who I don't usually drive, but I know. And he came out, but he clearly wanted to talk to me. And he was saying, you know, I just, I just really don't want to be far away from my parents anymore. So much that could happen. I said, really, what is it that you're worried about? He said, well, it could be a school shooting. This is a fourth grader, or a third grader, so I just thought, oh, okay. I said, I'm sorry you have to worry about that, but we are going to improve the security of schools. But I just, yeah, I don't know if you see it, but right there, right in my face.
Yeah, yeah, that concern, I think, number one.
Yes, on the lines, of course.
So with all of that, we have some, we have the report that Liz and Andy shared with us, the analysis of both possible capital improvement needs staged out for years at both this building and the other building. And I'd encourage the board to look at those documents, since we've set aside our next meeting on April 20th, to look in more depth at capital improvement projects. And that's our focus then. And Andy, I don't know whether it's appropriate for Steve to come, but I know that we should, we, the board should do some homework between now and then to try to, again, prioritize those things. And to conclude what Jim is suggesting, and you've just given us a short list of possible.
I mean, I would also encourage, like, looking at things that we maybe always overlook. It's like, I, I'm not saying, like, a sidewalk or, or, or a, or a step up. Some of our buildings, you know, because of salt, like the, the steps, the steps are starting to chip away and stuff like that. Like, are there? Are there those things that we haven't, you, you kind of almost stop looking at? Because they're there every day, or they've been covered in snow. And, and so, are there some of those pieces? Or what Mark Moody had, had discussed is some type of barrier, like planter, you know, big, heavy planter barriers. So, you know, to protect if a car wanted to come through a wall or something like that. So some things that we don't always think about or see is to, is to, I think, other places. I mean, because they're small little projects. And then, but if you don't take care of those little small projects, eventually, you're, you know, you're putting in a whole new, you don't have a lot of steps here, but that kind of thing, so.
And similarly, the next topic is the plans for enhancing the outdoor learning environments. And so, both of those are things we'll talk about at our next meeting. Have you had a chance, Liz, to talk to the major-based team here and what are their thoughts?
Well, they met today, I met with Mandy. Yes, Thursday or today, their days are really blurring together this week for me. And just talked to her about the article that was passed and that it would both include enhancing our outdoor learning. It could mean creating a space for pre-K students to access outside. I'll be meeting with Lisa and Jennifer and Jeff right after vacation to go over the pre-K space and talk more about their outdoor needs. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay, well, keep us informed about that. And, you know, we've got resources to offer to co-fink with them. But it needs to start with their planning here. The kids as well would be my suggestion to have the students involved in what they would like to see here for enhancements outdoors. And also, it can include the makerspace. It, it doesn't have to all just be outdoors, but to enhance the learning environments.
Yeah, we said in the end, I was going to mention.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. But we, you know, and so on the one hand, we want to keep moving ahead with all of this. On the other hand, as I was saying to Liz recently, these are reserve funds. We don't have the same pressures that we've got with Esser monies. These monies are set aside, so we get to do a thoughtful planning process.
And I think that's where I would like, you know, we had, we've had one meeting a couple of weeks ago at the SU, really talking about facilities and starting that process. But coming back, I knew principals were getting ready for break and everything, but coming back and having them start to look at their, and planning out, just as you're talking about, planning out this kind of strategic plan for their facilities for the next five years so that we maximize Esser funds. But then, we can also look, and just as Jim's saying, you got some money here. Oh, hey, we can, we were going to do this in year three, but we can do this now, right?
Exactly.
That, that kind of stuff, so. And that it's all planned out, so that, you know, when we all win the lottery tomorrow, the next group knows what's going on.
I had a document like that started. So I would love to meet, talk about you or Steve or.
Oh, just dump it on the template and you're good. Like, like usual, this is a.
Yeah.
By the way, is, is a similar process happening at all the other schools, operating security? Good.
Yeah, about the operating security.
Yeah, we have a phone too.
Yes.
And that will include the key card too, again.
So all buildings will have a FOB card for access. And there'll be multiple access points in each building. That'll be key FAB or FOB. Here, I believe there's three. Four, okay. But then, what we can do there is, if we know a teacher's coming in on a Saturday and they're coming in between 12 and 3, you can turn their card on so they can come in during that time. Or, just because they FOB in, you now have a record of them being in the building. So you have that level of security.
Okay, so you, you don't let teachers come in on the weekends with that?
We do, but what I'm saying is that those are the pieces that it allows you to do. But also, what, the, the FOB system then would also work with the, our printers, right? So that teachers can just FOB their, their printer, so they work that way. But because it's all one system, let's say Liz was going to be doing some project at the middle school and they were accessing the auditorium at the middle school and she needed to get in. We could program it so that she now can get in without having to give her a key. Someone doesn't have to meet her and do those things. So, so it provides us some flexibility. But it also really allows us that access point. The second piece that we'd have to really look at, that was a really cost prohibitive, is door alarms for if a door has left ajar. Each door is about $3,500. So, to, to put into a system like that. And so, we're really looking at that as a second phase in there because we want to get this one done, get the first one. But it's, it's improving, the cameras would basically cover almost the entire property. We would be able to see every corner, see all the way out to the softball field and stuff of that nature, so.
And be able to play back.
And play it back, and then Liz can pull it up from her, her cell phone, anywhere type of thing.
It's amazing, yeah, great.
So it's, it's a.
It's just sad that we've come to this in schools.
Yeah.
But also, we, we talked about with West West, because that will, that's included in, in this whole package. West West will get same, similar types of access. And then also cameras in that facility. And then we are going to be installing a program out there so that someone might show up at West West and, you know, push the button to get in. There might not be anyone at West West, but this building can access and be able to speak to that person.
That's great.
And, you know, if it's our employee who has forgotten their key, they can actually get buzzed in remotely. So that's, you know, so I think it'll be a nice enhancement for that. But also, you know, someone shows up, they don't, you know, I, I come to Westminster School, you know, we could explain that they're in the wrong school type of thing or something of that nature.
It was a cell connection in Westminster, so it doesn't have to work.
Because it would work through our, our, our software, our computer software and our servers.
Yeah, but somebody at the West School, West School wouldn't be able to connect with you by the phone, by phone.
They'd get through the phone number.
Oh, you mean, I see.
So there'd be like, it's not a ring, you know, like the doorbell things, the ring system? But essentially saying, you, you buzz yourself and there's a, there's a camera that then someone can access from any computer. So Liz could, you know, be on the slope somewhere. Oh, hey, you want to get in, it's Margie wants to get into West West, and she cannot give access to Margie, so.
All right, so, and all of this in more detail at our next meeting. We're just really focused, it's a special meeting and we're focused on these, on these projects. Yeah, okay. And so with that, you know, our next item is the teacher request to leave. I don't think you need to be here for that. Thank you so much, too. So we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personal matter, a premature knowledge of which could put someone at some risk or disadvantage. Some move said Charlie? So we're, let me take a vote. Margie, are you voting yes or no to go into executive session?
Yes, I get to stay, right?
Yeah, you do. And we'd also invite, you have to stay, yeah.
Also invite the principal and the superintendent to stay and discuss this with us. So that's a yes from Margie, and, okay, Jean?
Yes.
You are out of executive session at 7:26.
At 7:26, okay, thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion from someone to speak to the action that we would like to take at this time.
I would like to entertain a motion to grant, and I use the name, right? Obviously, to grant Caitlin Coleman a one-year leave of absence from her role as classroom teacher. A one-year unpaid leave of absence from her role as an elementary school teacher.
So there is a motion on the floor, any discussion? I think, all right, we'll take a vote. Margie, your vote please?
Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you. Jean?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the request for a leave of absence from Caitlin Coleman passes unanimously. And please let her know we support her, look forward to her coming back.
Great, great, thank you.
If she chooses to, yeah. All right, director's comments. I think we have no other business other than date and time of next meeting, so. Director's comments. Margie, we're glad to see you, hope you feel better soon. Anything you want to add to the discussion?
Well, I'm looking forward to the next meeting.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Jean? Nope, also looking forward to the next meeting. All right, Charlie?
I did, oh, but I also heard also from Liz, wish we should put in the next article in the Gazette. It's all good stuff there. I'll be in touch.
Okay, perfect. Exciting, all right. And I, just as ever, would thank those who might watch this later. We really invite people to participate in these meetings, to be in touch with us throughout. You know, it takes a whole community to help ensure the quality of our schools, so thanks, everybody. That's it, entertain a motion to, oh, next meeting is April 20th at 6 o'clock. A special meeting focused especially on capital improvements and enhancements to our learning environments. All right. Move to adjourn.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is 802-463-1613. Or email us at fact@10@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.